I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education, June 22, 2023, to order. Let's please rise for the pledge. Thank you. Moving on to item three, standing approval items, acceptance of the agenda. Do we have any additions, changes, deletions? Seeing none, approved by consensus. Item number four, communications, Mrs. Anderson.
We've had a few since our last meeting. Carrie Chaffetz, Christina West, and Lisa Austin regarding the superintendent's email about the conference Dr. Martin attended, Mark Dingman regarding high school grading policy, Jen Chen regarding qualifications for school bus drivers, and Dave D regarding pride flags.
Thank you. Item number five, public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, a person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place the card in the basket prior to the citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or their designee for review, study, and possible future response. Thank you in advance for your cooperation. I have Joe Oliver. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Olivier. I'm a local coordinator with International Cultural Exchange Services. For the past 30-plus years, we've been a worldwide leader in international educational exchange, facilitating the exchange year experience for students from over 30 countries. I was here back in December and tried to find out who I needed to talk to in order to open the lines of communication. However, every single one of my attempts was either blocked by security or voicemail. I'm not just here on behalf of myself and my organization. I'm also here on behalf of one of my newer colleagues, who incidentally is also a Royal Oak parent. I wanted to find out what it would take to open up the lines of communication and get everything situated so that if I were fortunate enough to find a host family in this district, that the wheels would be in motion to have all of our ducks in a row. So, when in doubt, come to the top. So I'm here. The olive branch is extended. I know that it might be too late to get something done for the coming school year, but for the next couple of school years, the olive branch is out. Let's see if we can get something done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay. There is an opportunity for a second public comment later in the meeting as well. Item number six, consent agenda. We have 6.1 personnel changes. Any additions or deletions? Seeing no changes, consent agenda is passed. Moving on to seven matters for discussion action, 7.1 Superintendent, Mrs. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you very much. I would just like to let you all know and let our community know as well that we have held interviews and that we had applications from our students at Royal Oak High School who have an interest in serving on the Board of Education, either here at our regular board meetings or at our finance and facility meetings as student representatives. I'm proud to let you know that Ava Burke is here with us this evening. Ava is returning as a student board member. She attended our finance and facilities meetings in the second semester of last school year, and upon talking with her again at the end of the year, she was very excited and wanted to return and actually asked also to serve again on the finance and facility meeting, but because she was here tonight, we asked her to step up here. We also have other board members and students that will be joining us, and we'll be recognizing them as they're able to attend. I think the kids are already on summer vacation a bit. Matthew Matola, Alexander Britton, Anna Ludzinski, Matthew Bigley, Megan Hahn, and Ava, who's here with us tonight. So this is something that our board had asked for, that we reached out with our students mid-year last year to get organized, and now again gearing up for a full school year. So I'm really pleased at the turnout that we had, and just wanted to make sure our students are recognized, and we're looking forward to working with you, Ava, and to all of our students, so.
Thank you, and welcome, Ava. And thank you. And definitely thank you for the students that expressed interest in joining us. And I have to say, speaking with all the students is always amazing to me, and they have a lot of great ideas and are very passionate about wanting to do things and create that communication line between us and the students, which is fabulous. So thank you for being willing to do that. 7.2 Curriculum and Instruction, Dr. Yuanis.
Thank you, Mrs. Van Heitzma. This will be my shortest update so far, so I know people are waiting for a short update, so we'll get right to it. We have many of our summer learning programs starting next week, so I just wanted to touch on a couple of those here. So next week, June 26, will be our first session for elementary summer learning. This is for students exiting DK to 4th grade. Two locations will be Oakland Elementary and Adams Elementary. We have over 285 families that have registered for the programs there. At the elementary level, they will focus on a mixture of math, ELA, some enrichment programming as well, so we're excited to get that started. There'll be two sessions, June 26 to July 14, and then July 17 to August 3. For our middle school summer learning program, this would be for students exiting 5th through 8th grade. We have approximately over 100 families who have registered for the summer learning program, which will take place at Royal Oak Middle School. Some of the activities or subjects that students will have a chance to engage with will be language and literature, math, fitness and fun, some Lego STEM activities, theater option, a STEM coding option for students, and then some design tech opportunities. Now, that timeline is similar to the elementary as far as two sessions, June 26 to July 14, and then July 17 to August 3. Our high school opportunity really focuses on credit recovery, so that already has started. It was June 19 to July 4, Monday through Friday. There are two sessions there, an 8:00 AM to 11:30 session and a 12:00 to 3:30 session. About 95 students have registered for that credit recovery opportunity. And there's also a PSAT/SAT readiness virtual course with about 16 students that are engaged in that throughout the summer as well. That runs from June 26 to August 3. So we are excited to get those programs kicked off. I want to bring your attention to item 7.2.1, the leveled library book purchases. I wanted to talk a little bit about this, but we're providing teachers with shared libraries that they can use in their classrooms. Approximately 1,400 books will be provided for each elementary building, and these books will really help teachers in providing engaging, small group instructional focus groups that offer targeted areas of instruction for some of the literacy that we're trying to improve. So we're excited about this opportunity to be able to provide these 1,400 books to each of our elementary buildings. And that's it.
Any questions, anybody? Dr. Yuanis, is it 1,400 books for, in all the schools, or 1,400 per school?
Yeah, 1,400 per school. So each building will have 1,400 new books added to their leveled library, enough for the K-2 and also for 3-5, again with that focus of small group instruction, which ties to our Leo project that's focusing on small group instructional strategies. So it'll be nice to get those in.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
So I know after attending the PTA meetings and stuff in post-COVID, how students were at different, really quite wide range of reading levels. Is this going to provide that wider range for the classes?
Yeah, so what's happening over the years, well, the leveled libraries have been a struggle in all of our elementary buildings. We've tried to purchase some throughout the time over the years, and part of what this will do is bring up some of our elementary buildings to have more leveled library books than they currently do. We have expanded the level of titles, so we're going to try to expand it to six book version options for each of the levels that kind of expands throughout that K-5 spectrum. But we're trying to capture some of that loss, the learning that has been lost over the few years here.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Jusinski?
As the board's social studies teacher, this isn't a trick question. Is there a reason that there's not social studies or history offerings at the elementary or middle school summer learning opportunities?
I believe one of the main purposes with elementary and middle school learning, we wanted to provide teachers with an opportunity to share some of their expertise. We wanted to focus on math and ELA first. That was kind of the easiest option as far as for elementary. And then we didn't really have teachers that wanted to go with the social studies option. Some chose to do social emotional learning, some wanted to do some kind of science coding for the elementary. So social studies sometimes can be tricky at the elementary level, just because we're also trying to work through some of those curriculum units with open schools. But math and ELA is always the quickest, easiest one to get to, and then teachers, I think, want to get creative and want to give them that chance to be creative as well with that.
Thank you. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Alexander?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby authorizes the superintendent to finalize the purchase of leveled library books from Pioneer Valley Publishing in the amount of $43,980.
Can I have a second? Mrs. Cook? I wanted to call you Mrs. Anderson for some reason. Mrs. Anderson, can I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to the very riveting topic of the day, 7.3 Finance and Facilities, Mrs. Bella.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Yuanis, for making sure I had a lot of space for my presentation.
My pleasure.
This will be one of my longest of the year.
It's about time I could do that for you.
I'm glad we didn't do retirements before this, so you guys can really see where it's all made. All right, so we have to legally adopt budgets for the general fund, the community service fund, the food service fund, and the student activity fund. We have five other funds in the district, and I'm going to review those as well, but the resolution's a little different. These four we have to legally pass budgets for prior to July 1 each year. So there's two things. There's three different resolutions tonight. 7.3.1 is the final amendment for all of the budgets, these four. 7.3.2 is for the other five funds that I just talked about. And then 7.3.3 is the budget adoption for the 2324 year for these four, for the ones that we have to legally adopt. And we did it a little different this year in the resolution, so if you have any questions, certainly let me know. So we have gone over this. Nothing's really changed with the state budget, right? So even today, there's been no changes. I think the hope is that the governor will sign the budget by June 29, but there haven't been any updates in the progress of that budget yet. So these are the same assumptions we've used in May and the meeting we had two weeks ago. Student enrollment is flat. The change in PA 152 is 2.05%, which is an increase of about $133,000 to our budget. Just yesterday, the retirement increases came out. So there is some talk that there will be an increase in the state budget to 147.8 for that equal offset, but we haven't seen the budget yet, so we don't know that. So it went up about 3% the ORS increase, and that goes from October 1st to September 30th and aligns with the state budget year. The collective bargaining agreements, it was a negotiation year with ROAS, and this is steps that is represented here on this budget. I know later on in the agenda, we do have the contract recommendation for your approval. ROEA, ROAS, which is our para and secretaries, ROSPA, which is the psychologists, and then we have the non-rep group. All of those have negotiated contracts and includes any of the steps or increases that are in those contracts. I know we do have a list of retirements now, so we usually show that as a $20,000 per retirement of a cost savings. And then we have the ability to choose our staffing for enrollment and programs, and we usually add an additional $120,000 per staff member. Now, we haven't necessarily done that at this point. We've had some discussions, and some of the added positions that we have talked about for next year are grant funded and don't necessarily affect the general fund bottom line. We know what our contracted services changes are with our partners, Durham, ABM, SAFEAD, Oakland Schools Technology. Those were negotiated contracts from last year, so we know what those changes were. And at this point, we don't have any programs, additions, or deletions. So we start with last year's structural deficit and then add in the new changes that we are aware of. We've already gone over this. If you'd like, we can go over some of this again, but there have been no changes at this point. I even saw a presentation that came from the west side of the state just as late as last week that had the same information that we've been talking about since May. Like I said, I hope we'll see a budget next week. That would be nice, although we're going to pass our budgets tonight. And then if there's any significant changes, which we had to do during COVID, we could always do an additional amendment. If something that we really weren't expecting, we could always do that. While we usually do December, March, and then June, there's nothing that says we couldn't do an additional one of some, there were some big changes that we wanted to make sure we capture. So here we go. General fund. So the 2223 year, I would still expect, or I have a structural deficit here of $1 million, and then the 2324 school year, a structural deficit of $2 million. Now, I just wanted to point out that I'm assuming 458 dollar per pupil increase in the foundation allowance is what is included in that 2324 budget. Also want to point out that while I have a structural deficit of $1 million in the general fund, I do not expect at this point that we will be there. The reason is, is that we have to record all the grants that we received. One of the things I've been talking about a little bit lately is pre-COVID, we had $3.4 million of the grants. This year, we had 13.8 million. So all of those funds have to be recorded along with their expenditures, and then whether or not they all get used. Some of the grants we have year over year, things like Title I, 31A, those are in there in each year because they're expected to continue. There are a lot of grant dollars in there right now that are COVID-related, some other additional like safety that were one-time monies. So what will happen is, if we close on June 30 and haven't expended all of those dollars, you're going to see them moved from this year to next year in the First Amendment. And that happened in the 2021 and 22 years as well, as we had to move those from year to year. Any questions with the general fund? Okay, the community service fund houses the Churchill High School Alternative Program as well as Latch Key, GSRP, and other items, other special programs like that. We do a transfer from the general fund to the community service fund to have it zero each time, but the reason for that is because the FTE of the students at Churchill are recorded in the general fund. One of the reasons you see the difference between 2223 and 2324, and it looks like the revenue and expenditures goes down, is in the last two fiscal years, we've had that childcare grant. So the remaining funds of that childcare grant were expended during this school year. So we'll be returning to our normal operations within that fund for the 2324 school year. The food service fund houses our program, and Mike Jacobs works with me on this budget specifically. I just want to remind you again that we have the fund balance is, we have an excess fund balance, and we have to spend that down. We should only have three months of operating income. So basically, you take the expenditures, divide that by 10 operating months, multiply it by three, and that's what our fund balance should be. So those structural deficits on both years are expected. They're planned. A lot of that is the loading dock at Royal Oak High School, some additional equipment that we're buying at some buildings. Our plan next summer for Keller and Adams kitchens, all the equipment is directly in this food service fund, which is why you see some of it in this year and some of it next year, some increase in food quality and some other equipment. So we have quite a few things that we have planned and have a plan with the state that's been approved for that spend-down plan. Student activity funds is all of the programs, clubs, groups, teams, all of their funds that they're able to keep. They have to follow the same rules as all the other funds of the district, but the money does not actually belong to Royal Oak Schools. It belongs to those students and groups, though we just have to account for it. And so we expect, and we did review this before this amendment and new budget, we do expect to spend roughly around $900,000. And once again, it's their funds in and out. So we have stayed pretty the same for the last several years. Okay, and then these are the ones that don't legally have to be approved, but we do. We have an approval process that we agree administration and the board that these are what we expect for our budgets. So the debt service fund takes care of the principal and interest for the 2018 and 2020 debt fund. We approved two weeks ago the levy that pays for this millage. Now, we have two sinking funds. Just want to remind you that 2012 sinking fund, this is the final year that we collected the levy, so we do have some funds left in that fund that we need to expend down, and they have to be spent in the same way as when they were voted on in 2012. So this is construction only. And then the 2022 sinking fund, so this July, we're going to collect that levy that we approved two weeks ago. We expect to collect about $3.7 million. Our planned expenditures at this point are $2.4 million in that fund, and that does include the new items that you can use for sinking funds, which most notably is instructional technology. And boy, were they happy to get a bite to this, so. Property maintenance still has, as of June 30, 2022, had $4.7 million in that fund, and this is represented a little bit differently because we don't have revenue in the same way that we do in other funds. The revenue is depicted as the fund balance each year. This year, we have planned expenditures in it of $1.3 million, and that's mostly that LED project that's going on around the district to change the lighting in all instructional spaces. Some of that cost will be recorded in the sinking fund, but we have that represented here for each year. And then we still are spending down our 2020 bond fund. We have $2.5 million planned for next year in that fund. And like I already mentioned, it's Adams, some of the bigger projects. There are many things that are in there, but the bigger projects are Adams' front office, Adams' kitchen, Keller's kitchen, and there are some other pieces that we've done along the way. Science chairs at Royal Oak Middle School, some additional instructional technology, and some security enhancements that we've already been working on this summer. And then finally, the technology fund. And that is funded mostly by the E-Rate program, so when we have big projects, we file for E-Rate, we receive some revenue. So this last year, we're receiving about $28,000 in E-Rate funding, so I wanted to be able to record that. And we used a lot of this fund during the bond work for that instructional technology, which was a good use of that fund. And I believe that is the last slide. Do you have any questions?
No. So hopefully soon, we will have a budget. Well, we have a budget. The state will provide us with a budget. And Ava, this is one of these things, if you would like the crash course lesson of school finance, I'm more than happy, I'm sure Mrs. Bella, I can offer Mrs. Bella to give you the Cliff Note version if you want. Okay, thank you. Oh, Mr. Chahorsky.
Ms. Bella, I know that the legislature has now allowed for transportation to be something that a sinking fund could be used for. My understanding is any approval prior to the effective date of that change could not be used for transportation. Am I correct?
That is correct. So our sinking fund was voted in November of '22, so we cannot use it for school buses. You'd have to have a new levy for that one. Go back to the voters, yes.
Making sure it's right.
Yes, you're correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? May I have a recommendation? 7.3.1 Budget Amendments for 2223 Budgets, recommendation, please, Mr. Chahorsky.
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following 2022-2023 budget amendments, general fund, community service fund, food service fund, and student activity fund as presented just now by Mrs. Bella.
Can I have a second? Mrs. Haynes? Can I have a roll call, Mrs. Anderson?
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Jusinski?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. 7.3.2 Ancillary 2222, 2023 Final Budgets and 2324 Budget Approvals. Can I have a recommendation? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the projected final 2022-2023 and proposed preliminary 2023-2024 for the following ancillary funds, debt funds, property maintenance, building and site sinking, 2012-2022, bond series number two, and technology fund as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Can I have a second? Mrs. Alexander? Mrs. Anderson, can I have a roll call?
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7.3.3, Budget Adoption for the 2023, 2024 Budgets. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mrs., Ms. Jocinski?
Be resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following 2023, 2024 Budgets, General Fund, Community Service Fund, Food Service Fund, and Student Activity Fund as presented.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Mrs. Haynes? Mrs. Anderson, can we have a roll call?
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Jocinski?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you. Item 7.4 Staff and Student Services, Mr. Wilinski.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Van Heitzma. I was under the impression we started our meeting at 6:30 tonight, and I quickly encouraged our three retirees to get here in time for Mrs. Isabella's budget presentation. So you're welcome. Anyway, I'm excited about this part of my presentation. I'm going to ask the three of them, Sam Lynch, Mike Lewis, and Karen Kaiser, if you would, all move over to the podium, and you can just join me there if you would. Okay, is, oh, it is on. All right, well, thank you, everyone. I, as I said, I'm here joined by three very distinguished retirees. I'm kind of giggling because I just gave a retirement speech for Sam Lynch last night that went quite a while, and I'm not going to give that same speech. But I, I started with, I want to first say all three of these people have worked for Royal Oak Schools for over 30 years. 32 years, Sam, 33, Mike Lewis, and 35, Karen Kaiser. And I'm sorry, but I just have to point out to everyone that we're hiring teachers who are 23, so it's kind of fun to watch. And I'm the same age as them, so it's okay. I'll start by introducing Sam Lynch. You all know as principal, has been most recently principal of Oakland Elementary. He started his career as a teacher for Royal Oak. He was also a coach over the years. He transitioned into being a high school assistant principal, and for the past 10 years, principal of Oakland Elementary. Mike Lewis, physical education teacher for Oak Ridge and Oakland Elementary. Mike began working for Royal Oak Schools in 1990, but he came here from Detroit Public Schools where I think he had two and a half years. So when the staff celebrated him with a basketball game, they had jerseys that said, on the back, it said Louis 35 and a half, the number of years he, he taught. And Karen, I want to say this about too. I started my speech about Sam last night. You've all heard Sam is a great guy. Everybody says that. Sam Lynch is such a great guy. So I talked about the other things I know about him as well. Mike Lewis is also a great guy. I hear that all the time, what, what great guys there, and it's true. And Karen Kaiser, Secretary for Keller Elementary. Karen began working in Royal Oak in 1988. She has 35 years of service. And Karen, did I meet you at Lincoln Early Childhood Center? Yeah. So this is what I say about Karen Kaiser. She is the nicest person in the world. And when I say that, people go, yeah, yeah. They don't laugh, they just agree with me. So I'm going to invite them, if you'd like, to come up. Sam, you want to start if there's anything you'd like to say? Sorry for putting you on the spot.
Well, I'm glad Pat didn't continue what he started last night. But I, I really wanted to, I mean, one, say it's actually, it's a particular honor to be up here with Mike and Karen. I've known both of them for a long, long time, and I, there aren't many, there aren't anybody that I respect more than the two of them, and they're, you know, very different areas, but I, I just have been thankful to be able to work with them and to see how committed they are to what they do each and every day, no matter what, and I, it's, it's an honor. And really, other than that, just to say lots of thanks to everybody because it really is like a group effort. And when we have these celebrations, to me, it's like a, it's not about a person, it's about all of the different things that have happened over the years and the connections and like the, the lot, the work that a lot of people have done to lift others up. And I'm just, you know, I'm going to pick, I'm not, well, I'm not going to steal Mike's thunder because he made a great comment about a week ago, and I'll let him say it again if he wants, but just that I feel very honored to, to have been able to have, you know, have the career work here for, for all those years, so, so thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's been a wonderful journey. Started out as a lunch monitor, up to a secretary. I love everyone that I've been working with, the families, the students, the staff, all of you. It's been a wonderful journey. Thank you so much.
I'm just very thankful and grateful to Royal Oak, all the parents, all the kids, the community, everybody I've been able to teach with. It's been, it's been an honor. It's been a tremendous ride for me, and it's, it's been great, and I'm just so thankful for the community of Royal Oak and everything that you do for kids. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. My wife, Lisa, is here with, with me, and she deserves a hand for supporting all this, the teaching and coaching, all the years. Thanks, Lisa.
Oops, my husband's here also. His name is Fred. Thank you for his support.
Well, I, I am confident I will still see Karen at the Rotary Auction next year, and I am confident I will still see Sam through Roya and in the community, so I'm very happy about that. And I, I, it's very infrequently that you see people with that many years of service to the schools. I won't cry, I won't cry, but thank you so much for the, the memories and the history that you've brought to our district.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, I was just going to add, and you did it very well, Ms. Van Heitzma, but you know, we all are very busy with our day-to-day responsibilities in our jobs, and so in the classroom, in the gym, on the field, in the office, we're all very busy. But I know that it's through all those other connections that these three represent that they will be known for. So the families and the students that were impacted by all the special things that go on with Rotary, with Blessings in a Backpack, you know, with Roya, with coaching, some of the students' fondest memories, even as adults, when you talk about them. I'm a teacher, I know I would want them to remember that key math problem or that cool social studies unit, but I do think they will remember all those special events and special engagements that they had the opportunity to experience in our school district. And these three tonight represent all those hours of extra service and extra outreach and extra love that they shared and care with our students and families. And so just know how many hundreds and hundreds of students you've impacted, thousands over your careers, and how many of those students are, are changed and better because of you. So thank you for that service above and beyond.
Mr. Wilinski, are you done? I wasn't sure, I apologize.
I just, I have something not, not quite as interesting, just a little bit more. Item 6.1 on tonight's consent agenda lists our personnel changes since we last met. And as I said last month, you're going to begin seeing more, an increased number of new hires this time of year. On that report, you'll also see two end-of-year resignations, one from Dave Mason. Dave has been a history teacher at Royal Oak High School, and one from Kristen Perez, a math teacher at Royal Oak Middle School. Dave has accepted a teaching position with Avondale School District where he came from six years ago. He's returning to Avondale. And Kristen is, has accepted a position with Rochester Schools, actually about a mile from where she lives, and I believe where her kids attend school. Also listed on that report are seven new recommendations for hire. I believe we had three teacher, new hires last month, so we'll have quite a few more in the summer months, but I'm pretty excited about what I think is a good start on staffing. I was hopeful to get as many as we could filled, vacancies filled before July. Just a point of interest, Samantha Maurice is a 2018 graduate of Royal Oak High School. She is going to be teaching emotionally impaired for Keller Elementary. And she'll, also Elise McCutcheon is a 2018 graduate of Royal Oak High School, which is exciting, that point I was making of people much younger entering the profession as people retire, much younger than me. We've tried to hire as many student teachers of our own as we could. In recent years, we've hired 11. Samantha and Elise did not student teach with us, but they just completed their student teaching. And then just quickly about enrollment, we have 349 children enrolled for kindergarten currently in the fall, and 71 enrolled for developmental kindergarten. So 349 for kindergarten, last fall, we had 367. That's, we're down 18. We still have the summer months to enroll children. Last summer, we enrolled 14 children over the summer, so might be about the same, but we're up 24 children for developmental kindergarten. And if you combine those two, we're at 420 for kindergarten and developmental kindergarten. Last fall, we were at 414. So we're up six children already. And I think perhaps kindergarten is a little bit down because parents that in the past might have enrolled in kindergarten are choosing developmental kindergarten. And that's my report, unless you have any questions.
More like a statement. So as I'm looking at the new Oakland Oak Ridge gym teacher, Mr. Lewis, I'm hoping you pass on all of your wisdom on how to put together an amazing field day, because when we talk about the memories of these teachers, my husband and I, Haynes's, both, every, every year, we help with that field day, and you, you put on a great event. I mean, you're just an amazing teacher, but I told both my kids you were retiring, and my son was like, oh, you know? So you made an impact on our family, and I just hope that, that those field days continue to be amazing, but thank you for everything you've done. Mr. Chahorsky.
Ms. Wilinski, with the positions that we have currently open or available, do we have candidates that have applied for each of those?
Yes, no shortage of candidates right now for most of our positions, and we're in, we're in the process of holding interviews every day. We've held first round of interviews for some positions, second round scheduled next week, so at our next meeting, we'll, we'll have more recommendations for hires certainly.
Excellent, thank you.
Can, can I ask a question about how the, are we doing any better with Latchkey hires? Or is it still the, the challenge?
It's still a challenge. I, I would say even with hires, once staff are named, it's a process to get them fully vetted and enrolled in working in the Latchkey program, which takes a little bit more time, but we are still working on it. And that's a, a great segue to be able to say if we do have anyone in our community who is interested in working in our before or after-school care programs or would like to volunteer. At lunchtime, we certainly have positions available. All the information is on our website. You can call our board office as well to gain more information. But as we hire staff, then we're, we are able to bring 18 students per staff member, I believe is the number off of the waitlist, so that we can provide the number of slots that our families are requesting at all of our schools.
Thank you. Yeah, item eight, it's the time for our second public comment. Same rules apply. Do we have anybody to address the board?
Sorry, I came in after you started. I don't know what the rules are.
That's okay. Please state your name for the record.
Sure, Patrice Rank. And I am resident of Royal Oak and have a grandson who is in the Royal Oak School system. So I'm currently in Parenting 2.0, and my son would have been 30, my daughter is 29. My son passed away almost four years ago, and now I'm the grandparent and legal guardian of his son who attends the Royal Oak Schools. I'm now a concerned grandparent and legal guardian after reading an article regarding the practices that Dr. Kimberly Martin has implemented after receiving the email from Superintendent Fitzpatrick yesterday. It was mentioned, and Dr. Martin was quoted as saying, "We are working with our record-keeping system so that certain screens can't be seen by the parents." And so if there is a nickname in there, we are trying to hide that. It sounds incredibly deceptive. Right now, I was thinking about the DEI program, which all the companies around have it. But right now, after reading the article, seeing, there was just, they gave the captions of what the people were saying. DEI to me now stands for deceive, eliminate, and infringe parental rights. We tell our children to never trust an adult that would ask or help keep a secret. Now we have this. Royal Oak Schools are now hijacking the parental rights when it comes to life-altering decision-making, which you have no right to make nor carry out. What legal rights do you have over a parent when it comes to this matter? Would you contact me if my child misbehaves? If they're injured? If they're sick and need to be picked up? Or if they're about to harm themselves? Would I be contacted? I think the answer is yes to that. But you will not contact a parent when the child wants to identify as a different gender or when they want to change their pronouns. The Midwest Plains Equity Assistance Center, it's also known as MAP. So part of MAP's mission is to improve school engagement, environment, and school safety, as well as family and community engagement in the schools. The hidden screen that Dr. Martin speaks of now contradicts that. Was the conference recorded? And will that recording be available to parents for viewing? On one of the Royal Oak Community Facebook pages, I believe it's a husband of a special education teacher, said that the email was going, is being reviewed, as well as the recording of the meeting. Are these hidden screens currently being used? And can parents see what these screens may contain?
Can you wrap up, please?
Sure. Will this require Freedom of Information Act request? How many lawsuits can the Royal Oak Schools afford? And don't forget, we live in a very litigious society. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Will, will I get any answers to the questions that I had, or is this just a listening session?
I can read to you the statement that we read before public comment, if you didn't hear it earlier.
Okay.
I will do that. A person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place the card in the basket prior to the citizen public comment period. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole and not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments and appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comment shall be referred to the superintendent or their designee for review, study, and possible future response. Thank you in advance for your cooperation.
Thank you.
Moving on to item nine, Board Comments and Liaison Report. Do I have any? Mrs. Anderson?
I'm going to get this comment in first. So the Royal Oak Schools Foundation Golf Outing is this coming Monday at beautiful Metamora Golf Club. If you don't want to golf, you can come for the luncheon. It's a barbecue, they have a barbecue pitmaster. It's wonderful food, it's beautiful out there, and it's a great cause. And then I was also going to mention that usually our facilities and finance meetings in which we discuss a lot of the things that Mrs. Isabella was referring to and that we voted on this evening are usually the Thursday before the school board meetings, but this in July, we will actually be having facilities and finance at 5:30 PM, the same night as the school board meeting, which is July 13th.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Just another congratulations to the retirees, to those that were able to be present, and those that are here tonight. There are refreshments in the back of the room. Please partake in the refreshments. Item 10, closed session. Can I have a recommendation? Mrs. Anderson, I don't know why, Mrs. Alexander.
We resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education adjourned to a closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiations connected with collective bargaining agreements as is permissible under the Open Meetings Act 15.268, Section 8, Subsection C.
May I have a second? Mrs. Haynes, Mrs. Anderson, could we have a roll call?
I'll vote yes, trustee Haynes.
Yes.
Trustee Chosinski.
Yes.
Trustee Cook.
Yes.
Trustee Chorworski.
Yes.
Trustee Alexander.
Yes.
Trustee Van Heidsma.
Yes.
Motion passes. Motion passes.
that usually our facilities and finance meetings in which we discuss a lot of the things that Ms. Abello was referring to and that we voted on this evening are usually the Thursday before the school board meetings. But this in July, we will actually be having facilities and finance at 5:30 PM, the same night as the school board meeting, which is July 13th.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Just another congratulations to the retirees, to those that were able to be present, and those that are here tonight. There are refreshments in the back of the room. Please partake in the refreshments. Item 10, Closed Session. Can I have a recommendation? Mrs. Anderson, I don't know why. Mrs. Alexander.
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education adjourned to a closed session for the purpose of discussing negotiations connected with collective bargaining agreements as is permissible under the Open Meetings Act 15.268, Section 8, Subsection C.
May I have a second? Mrs. Haynes? Mrs. Anderson, could we have a roll call?
I'll vote yes. Trustee Haynes?
Yes.
Trustee Chasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on the agenda. 10.2, we've reconvened. Item number 11, Contract Agreement, ROASA. Can I have a recommendation, please? Mrs. Haynes?
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby ratifies the collectively bargained and tentatively agreed upon master agreement with the Royal Oak Association of School Administrators effective July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025.
Can I have a second, Mr. Chahorsky?
May I have any discussion, comments? May I have a roll call, please, Mrs. Anderson?
Trustee Haynes? Trustee Chasinski?
Yes.
Trustee Cook?
Yes.
Trustee Chahorsky?
Yes.
Trustee Alexander?
Yes.
Trustee Van Heitzma?
Yes.
I'll vote yes, and the motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to item 12, Agreement. Approval by consensus. Thank you very much.